Meeting order. Chief, would you lead us in prayer for pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Larry, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Prayer of thank you. Father God, we come before you and we ask that you guide us in your direction. Lord, we seek your will and we seek that you may be glorified in everything that we do. Uh, Lord, we just lift you up in all things and we continue to pray for Councilor Johnson and his recovery. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Roll call.
Counselor Foster.
Here.
Counselor Locke.
Here.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
Counselor Johnson will not be present this evening and a quorum is declared.
Do you have any modifications to the agenda?
No, sir.
All right. Approval of consent agenda minutes, regular meeting, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, and review and approval of counts payable.
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, and approval of counts payable. Is there any more discussion? Anita.
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, go to proclamations, communications, and appointments. We have quite a few proclamations and we're gonna split that up amongst the councilors. Proclamation number one, mental health month proclamation. May is mental health month. Sorry. Mental health month twenty twenty-one, tools to thrive. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas, all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health especially especially during a pandemic, and whereas, prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas, there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency, and whereas, mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas, with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas, each business, school, government, agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsible responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention and treatment efforts. Therefore, I, Dale Becker, Mayor of Montavista, along with Valleywide Health Systems, proclaim May twenty twenty-one as Mental Health Month. I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to commit to our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need to appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions.
The second proclamation is celebrating Teachers Appreciation Week, May third through the seventh, for Kids Connection. Whereas, the city of, whereas, the citizens of the city of Montavista firmly believe that after-school professionals, those who work with children and youth in a wide variety of program settings to provide extended learning opportunities during out-of-school hours, have a positive effect on our children, families, communities, and businesses. Whereas, after-school teachers are decisive, are a decisive element in children's access, high-quality relationships, and expanded opportunities beyond what they have access to at school and home, which they need to reach their full potential. Whereas, after-school teachers deserve appreciation for all that they do to, for children, to enhance their education, promote physical and emotional health, provide a safe environment, and expose them to new experiences. Whereas, the city of Montavista is committed to supporting the professionals who provide expanded learning opportunities that will help close the achievement gap and prepare young people to compete in a global economy. Now, therefore, I, Victor Segala, Mayor Protem of the city of Montavista, do hereby proclaim May third through the seventh as After-School Teacher Appreciation Week for Kids Connection within the city of Montavista and hers, the citizens of Montavista. I also have an article I wanted to read real quick. So, uh, if you guys haven't looked at the Montavista Journal, take a look, see if you know your face on here, sitting back over there, okay? Anika Velazquez is mom to her two children, Levi and Jackson, and the director of the Montavista Kids Connection. She has been a mother for nineteen years now. Velazquez said she did not see herself as a mother when she was younger. "I was that girl growing up that swore she would never have kids," Velazquez said. And now nineteen years later, Velazquez shared how rewarding, how rewarding being a mother has been. "The most rewarding part of mother for me is watching my young men grow into confident adults," Velazquez said. "There is no greater reward than seeing them conquer all their fears and find their own way in this world." Velazquez said she was drawn to her current job at Kids Connection because of her children. She started working for the city's recreational department as a coach and referee for the sports her boys played. At the time, the Kids Connection needed extra help, so the recreation department filled in and filled in, and Velazquez had been there ever since and is now director of the program nine years later. Here, she works to provide children a safe place to grow and enjoy being kids after school when they run their summer day program. Velazquez said her favorite part of her job is its ever-changing environment. "It's a new challenge every day, every school year and every summer. You really know, you really never know what each day will bring," said Velazquez. Velazquez said that her career helping meet the needs of children at Kids Connection has been rewarding. "I find my job rewarding in knowing that I am providing a place where children feel safe, enjoy coming to, and even more than that we have a community of parents that trust and appreciate the work Kids Connection is doing." Thank you, Anika, for everything that you do. It's a monument of gratitude, so.
I have an amazing team that works with me, but not me by myself.
Thank you. We have, uh, one more proclamation, uh, from May second, twenty twenty-one, to May eighth, twenty twenty-one, is Municipal Clerks Week. The fifty-second annual professional municipal clerks week. Whereas, the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of the local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas, the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas, the office of the professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas, professional municipal clerk have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas, the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on the functions of local government and community. Whereas, professional municipal clerk continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now, therefore, I, Victor Segala, Mayor Protem of Montavista, Colorado, do recognize the week of May second through May eighth, twenty twenty-one, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk. You need advance and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their ex- explorer, exemplary dedication to the communities they present, they represent. Thank you, Anita.
Next one is May tenth, twenty twenty-one, to May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, National Police Week. Whereas, there are approximately nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Montavista Police Department, and whereas, the Montavista Police Department plays an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all members of our community, and whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of Montavista Police Department unceasing, unceasingly provide the vital public service, and now, therefore, be it resolved that the Montavista City Council hereby declares the week of May ninth to May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, to be National Police Week in the city of Montavista, and May fifteenth as Peace Officers' Memorial Day in honor of law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of their duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Be it further resolved that the Montavista City Council calls upon all citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered and dedicated service to their communities and have established for themselves an inviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. The Montavista City Council publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Signed this day, May, signed this sixth day of May, twenty twenty-one, in the city of Montavista, state of Colorado, and witness thereof the seal of the city of Montavista, and the signatures of the city are affixed. Thank you. Please support me.
May sixteenth through twenty-three, twenty twenty-one, National Public Works Week proclamation. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Montavista, and whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities, essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in Montavista to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in the respective communities, and whereas, the year twenty twenty-one marks the sixty-first annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now, now, therefore, he, Dale Becker, Mayor, does hereby designate the week of May sixteen, twenty, through the twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association, and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting their national health, safety, and quality of life.
Here.
Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas, in nineteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees, and whereas, the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas, trees can reduce the erosion and precious topsoil of wind and water, lower your heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas, trees are renewable, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business and areas, and beautify our community, and whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, Dale Becker, Honorable Mayor of the city of Montavista, does hereby proclaim May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, Arbor Day in the city of Montavista, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the hearts and promote well-being of this and future generations.
Will we be planting trees, Rob?
We will. On, um, May thirteenth at four o'clock at Fulton Wyder Park, we will do a celebration tree planting. Um, I do have Kirby Self and Jim Poston both from the Tree Board here as well. Um, we would invite everybody to come and.
You said by May thirteenth.
May thirteenth at four o'clock. And that's at Fulton Wyder Park.
Awesome. Next. Rob, this is probably yours.
This is, wow, this is a good one. In today's workforce, um, longevity is not necessarily something that you see, um, with the average being between four and six years, people staying in their, in their jobs before they move on, so it's quite unusual to see somebody with ten years. It's even more rare to see somebody with fifteen or twenty, and it's exceptionally rare for the gentleman that I'm gonna call up now. I'd like to present Andrew Valenzuela to come up. Andrew's been with the city, I'll tell you how many years here in a little bit, but he was one of our senior operators. Um, he was also one of the first when I was hired on that extended his hand and reached out and said, "Let me help you with the things that you don't know. There are certain things that you can't buy, and one of the most and the biggest thing is experience," and he has that. Um, I continue to go to him, um, called him a few times today on a couple of things that we're working on to find out where mines are and where everything is. So, at this time, I would like to present Richard Valenzuela, appreciation of your years of service, dedication, thirty years.
Woo! Is there anything you want to say?
That's exactly what I was gonna ask you.
Is there anything you want to say?
Thank you so much. That's awesome.
Yeah, thank you. Congratulations.
That is total, it hurts. Thirty years, that's awesome.
So, it's as old as I am. All right, citizen comments, special presentations, scheduled appearances. In order to be included on this portion of the agenda, you have to fill out the appropriate form with city clerk, no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. So, right now, we have a letter from Counselor Johnson.
Good evening, counsel. Counselor Johnson had sent me a letter and asked me to read it into record this evening. April, or, excuse me, "To the citizens of the city of Montavista, Honorable Mayor and City Council, City Clerk, City Manager, and Staff. Please accept my resignation from the Montavista City Council, effective May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Recent health issues have interfered with my ability to fulfill my responsibilities of the office, and it is not in the best interest of those I represent for me to continue in this manner. It has been my honor to serve this fine city, and my goal as a counselor has always been to give the citizens of the city the voice they deserve at the highest level of government. I am disappointed that there were times that these plans and proposals were not successful. That is, however, part of political process. In addition, my passion for just cause and occasion have resulted in words and actions deemed by some to be harsh, and I do apologize for any offense this may have caused. As a private citizen, however, I hope to continue to champion causes that benefit the city and its wonderful residents. The people of this city deserve a voice, whether that be from the floor or from the deus. But overall, this experience in local government has been positive, has been a positive one, and I trust my fellow counselors and administration and city staff feel the same. I have made close friends and frosted and developed new relationships, as well as deeper appreciation for the role and function of local government. On a personal note, my healing and subsequent release from a current facility is dependent on faith, prayer, and work on my part, but should not be more than two or three weeks, I hope. Above all, I give glory to the God of creation for my healing, and I extend my deep appreciation to all who have prayed and continue to support me in this process. Thank you all, respectfully, Gary Johnson." He also sent me, um, an email this afternoon, and he just wanted me to let you all know. It's a special day. Not only is it a day for national prayer, but Gary was diagnosed with mus- um, macular degeneration in his eye. He went to the eye doctor today, and that macular degeneration is clearing up. It wasn't macular der- degeneration, sorry. Um, eye doctor said today, no surgery. The medicine that is part of the other problems and the procedures and the medications attacking the other problem has helped clear up the issues with his eyes. Needless to say, he's been somewhat overwhelmed and a loss of words, and thanks so many and everyone for all the prayers, and as I, and as I may have said before, all those prayers are working.
Thank you, Anita.
Welcome.
RV park.
So, um, counsel, in front of you is folders, the colorful folders in front of you. This is a presentation that was presented to the planning commission. Um, this is from Callie Wedger. Uh, the name of the park is Serendipity Camp Park and Serendipity Bark Park. Um, she presented this to the planning commission, and the more we dug into it, she, this piece of property is in the industrial zone district. Um, in our code, the Montavista municipal code, a RV park is an allowed use by right, so Ms. Wedger does not have to go through the full-blown process, um, to move forward with her, her plan. But after speaking with Ms. Wedger, it was, "Let's go and talk to him and get advice and recommendations to help her better succeed with her business." So, in front of you is her business plan, um, and everything that is involved in it. This is an informational piece for you all to have, so you know what's going on when you start seeing a lot of glampers come into town. Um, if you don't know what a hip camp is, um, I'm sure Callie would be more than happy to explain it to you if you'd like her to, or if you have any questions for her. Um, but it is a place that's cheaper than a park, sort of say, um, kind of it.
It's like Airbnb, the warm embers, basically, and.
So, if y'all have questions or concerns or anything that you would like to bring up, we would love to hear that and to help her succeed.
So, we came up with this because I drove Amish to Montana, and I turned my minivan into a camper, and I wanted to find a place to stay without paying full price for a campground. So, I used the website, site Hip Camp, and there's also one called D Y R T, and they noted in your, your presentation there. And then later on, I found out that Airbnb also offers these type of unique stays, and well, through research, um, we learned that as people are looking for something to do, rather some, rather than have things, they want to do things. They want events. They want something to remember. So, we have a back, the whole property is one point seven five acres. We're turning the south end into a private agility training dog park. So, it's not gonna be, you can just go let your dog, I mean, you can go let your dog run, but we're gonna have things for the dogs to do. We're gonna have a trace race where they can chase two hundred yard string around. We're gonna have things for them to climb on and go through, and things for the dogs to learn, you know, to, just to do different things. If people are in a small yard, the dogs might not get activities. Sometimes they'll not go upstairs. So, we'll have these kinds of things that will help the dogs. We'll have a large dog park area and a small dog park area. Um, it will be a membership, so you'll have a key code to get in. We're not sure if there's gonna be a keypad or what. Um, but on the other side, the main side, the north, is gonna be about one point five acres, and, um, in your pictures, you can see towards the end, there's pictures of two tents, and we've already purchased these tents. They're thirteen feet. They're a canvas all-weather tent, so they can last spring and fall. I mean, you know, end of the winter even. They do allow heat in there. They're, they're supposed to go for it. We wanna bring the people, the energy of the younger people that are busy doing things and spending their money to Montavista, so we are right at the edge of city limits. Um, the north end of our property is city limit line, and so the city will gain the hospitality tax, plus it's, it's been walking distance to Montavista, so we're gonna just encourage, we'll have little flyers and things for people to come and say, "This is what there is to do in Montavista." We'll have some bikes that they can ride if they want to. They can walk. Here's your restaurants. Here's your things to do. I like Montavista. I want everybody else to like it too. So, any questions?
Question, um, just because like that's down a little ways. I know this would be like, I don't know how far in the future, but what about like a walkway to and from?
It's considered north Jefferson, and there is no walkway from the info center that way, so you'd have to extend it all the way out. That would be a long circle.
It's got, a lot of people walk that. A lot of moms with strollers will walk up and down there. Um, for the most part, everybody in their cars is pretty respectful. We have one racing incident. Um, I don't have a hard time calling the cops on people either, so, um, but it's, it's. But it's, it's a nice little walk, and, you know, it's real quiet out there, I mean, it is industrial. And so as we advertise this, we're gonna advertise, we want you to come and see what Montevista, what makes Montevista. We have Mountain King, we have, this is how potatoes are produced, and we wanna have some kind of a little flyer, not a flyer, but like a little saying, this is how potatoes are produced, this is what we do. We have Coors, here's a barley. We have the Schaefer Farm, which, there's some confusion on the address. It's actually Schaefer Road, North Jefferson. So if you Google two seventy five North Jefferson, it takes you to town. If you Google two seventy five Schaefer Road, it takes you to our place. But here we have hay, we have farmland. You know, this is what makes up Montevista, is the agriculture and the industry of Montevista. Plus, in your picture, you can see in the colored map, you will see, I think it's one place there. In the center of that is a POW Detention Camp Foundation, which we've done a lot of research, we talked to Paige Shaw, we talked to a lot of different people. Back in the forties, we had German, I think that's right, German prisoners that were in Molsonburg, and they transferred them to Montevista to stay on this location. And they would go out and they would work potatoes, and they would work with the farmers. And then we found two different sightings on the internet of history books that have written about this. So we feel like we've got something really special right there. So we wanna kind of like, this is what Montevista did too, and then the, there's another building in town that had housed another part of this POW detention working area. So we just wanna advertise Montevista, we wanna bring the people in. We have an Airbnb now, and I'd say ninety percent of the people come do sandings. So we wanna give them something to do after they've done the sandings, we want them to come and eat and stay in Montevista.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
I see porta potties, do you have plans to move out of those, or do you think that is sufficient for your target audience?
It's sufficient. There's an article in there, a lot, as pointed to Hip Camp, if you have so many acres, they don't even ask that you provide any kind of backup facility, that's pack it out. We don't wanna do that. So we will have the porta potties. Rob and I have talked at length, it's a very expensive venture to get water and sewer out there. It's a long ways, it's very expensive. So according to the state statute for campgrounds, and according to Hip Camp, porta potties fall in the range of what we can do.
And council, just something also, you all passed ordinance eighty nine one, which is an RV park regulation, and Ms. Wedger did follow the recommendations and the requirements in this resolution when she prepared that packet for you. So she's also looked into the floodplain area, she's looked into the topography of the area, and everything that's required in this ordinance to put her packet together for you all as well.
I appreciate the work you put into this.
Well, the property is what, I don't remember what term you used, Nita, but it was an ugly property. It was junky, and my mother had owned it for years, and I tried selling some of the stuff out of it. She filled up every square inch of this piece of property and a mobile home. So we have almost got the mobile home cleaned out, and it's going away, and then we cleaned up the property. We still have a ton of mini bulk bags that came from Staley's, but I have an idea for those too. But, you know, so we really want this piece of property to be, I mean, we're trying to better it, we're trying to better Montevista, and we feel like we're really going in the right step. And then, there's an article in there about how hip campers are better. And it says, they leave their places better than they found them. And we found that with ninety-nine percent of Airbnb people. They take such good care of the places that they stay, that we have notes, sometimes you can't even tell they've been there. And so, this will be listed not only on Hip Camp and DIRT, but it will be Airbnb as a unique stay. And we have two websites already, we have Serendipity Glamp Camp and Serendipity Bark Park, websites that will link up to different things in the city.
It's really interesting.
Oh, interesting.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm interested to read through it all, thank you.
Thank you.
Chamber of Congress update.
Thanks for having me again. Like I said last month, I guess it was just three weeks ago, I wanna start to do monthly updates on what we're doing. We didn't do, of course, I only saw it three weeks ago, we haven't done much. I did have the Home and Garden Show, April thirtieth and May first. We had twenty vendors, and not a lot of traffic, but I'm learning, I've only been in the job for three months, and I was kind of just thrown it, and so I'm really learning and growing, and learning from my vendors has been probably the coolest part of like, and then them giving me input on how I can better make Home and Garden kind of become a bigger and better show, and make it kind of like, you know, our next Crane Fest and Ag conference. So, we are starting to have, we'll have a slog summer, but the Stampede Office will be in the visitor center with me, so it'll be busy, but it'll be busy for Stampede, not for me. But yeah, any questions?
I don't have any.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Hope you're learning pretty quick too.
Trying to.
Yeah, I hope so too, you got a big building to build and venture. S L V C Y, Silas Valley Conservation Youth, who's presenting this?
So, I am Hart Ford, and this is Aiden Price. And recently, we've been trying to start a political club in our school, we started high school. And we found a lot of problems with just the ability to do it, because it is a political club, and schools have to be unbiased, I guess would be the way to put it. And so, we've been recently helping out with Silas Valley GOP in Del Mar, the Masonic Lodge. We've helped out in Almos a little bit. We helped them do the Lauren Boebert's event that she held in Del Mar, the Masonic Lodge. And we, in June, are going to help with her reelection campaign in Montevista, the Nazarene. And it's the Lincoln Day dinner, and we are helping out with that. And so, after our school kind of said it's hard to do, we thought we would take it outside of the school and try to start a club for the whole ballot, for everyone fourteen and up, fourteen and eighteen, for young kids who are interested in political science, people that can get involved with city council, commissioners, state representatives, people like that. And so we would like to start, what we're gonna call S L V C Y, like the mayor said, and that's not just Silas Valley, it's sort of youth. And so we just, we called Almos's mayor, and he said to go to your next city council meeting, and kind of ask them what steps we would need to take from this point on, and what else we could do, any suggestions, things like that to help us get this up and running. Uh, take it all, that's great.
Thank you so much for coming, I'm so proud to see you standing up like this. Wow, what you're doing is, it takes courage, it takes ambition, it takes diligence, and great job.
Thank you.
Do you have somewhere that you can leave with the school that you meet there?
Our school is going to let us use their gym, their outdoor, and their cafeteria. And we have not talked to other schools yet, but we're hoping to just get a sign the waivers that they have to rent out their gyms. I'm not really sure how they do that process, it's different at each school. But our school said they would let us host events, things like that, at school grounds, just through the school.
Takes a lot of courage right now.
So did, did both of you guys come up with this together, or?
Yeah, there's a few more, but we're kind of the ones who are trying to get it going.
Yeah, really get it going, get it started.
Any other, like, any other help, like adult helpers, or just you guys, like just?
We have, like I said, we have talked, we have helped with Del Mar, Silas Valley GOP, I'm not really sure what they're called yet, but we have been there a lot, and Larry Hearsink and Marie have been really helpful to us. The commissioner, which was
Dean Glover?
Dean Glover, asked us to
But nobody that's connected with you guys personally, cool, alright?
It's been all outside, yeah.
I might know somebody that might be able to kind of guide you guys in a direction, so I'll get you an email address.
Okay. Do you wanna do that?
Yeah.
If you both could sign your name on that sign in sheet, please?
And so, that's pretty much all we have. The mayor had just told us to come to our next city council meeting and see what advice you guys had, or any regulations that we had to follow, you know, things like that, so.
Have you already set up like a regular meeting, you know, like, say the third Friday of every month, or whatever, every other month, or?
We've been trying to, our group meets a lot to try to get plans going and stuff, and we are the thirteenth, we are going to look at outlines of bylaws, and I haven't really set this up, I don't really know.
Let me, if I were to offer you some advice, I don't know, that would be, find a time and hold to it. And I don't care if only two or three of you show up, keep showing up, and eventually four will show up, and then six, and but if you have it regular, and you, you make sure the word gets out that it's there, you'll be surprised that it, it might take it, maybe it might take it a minute, but it'll work.
Yeah, so thank you so much.
I will tell you that when I ran for mayor, I'm not a politician by no means. And it was a challenge, there's a lot to learn, and I'm in my fourth year, so I've learned a lot about politics. When, I'm the kind of guy that, okay, we're gonna get, do this project, let's get it done. It don't work that way in government. We're, from the first year till the fourth year, we're still trying to get that anchor pulled up, okay? So, that, that's one thing, I've had to learn patience, and I'm not a patient person. I raised five kids, so I have no patience. But, asking, like being here, I, I appreciate you guys so much, as Martha said, because it, you guys are our future. Cause I'm not gonna do this forever, I'm not a career politician, I know me, but it, you learn a lot as you go. You will learn that you can't make everybody happy, no matter what you do. But, like being the mayor in this council, we're nonpartisan, so that has nothing to do with party. We are here for the community. And that's, and that's why I ran for mayor, because of the community. So it's, you gotta look at that as well, my opinion is, you gotta be there for the people, no personal gain.
Right.
Honestly, because that's where you get a lot more citizens that wanna work with you and wanna help you when you're doing it for the right reasons. And you guys are welcome in our meetings, we have two, two a month, and you are always welcome to come in.
Well, thank you.
Glad to see you all over this.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Very awesome.
And that's, unless there's any questions.
There's an empty seat over here, watch.
Yeah. Thank you guys.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Board and Commissions.
So, it's that time of year, we should have done this probably a month or two months ago, but we need to have everybody represent the city on the boards that are out there. So the first board is the Rio Grande Board of Health. Carol Schrader was the representative for that, and she has moved, so she no longer is on that board. They still meet the second Tuesday of every month at three thirty. Don't all jump on it at once.
Wendy, do you want to get it again?
Maybe we can struggle back to that.
It's, it's right there here. Oh, I don't have a law.
Second Tuesday of every month at three thirty.
Do you guys want to look through this and then bring this back up next meeting? Or do you want us to say which ones we want, and then we'll reach one, I don't know? Otherwise, you're right, it might not get some on the field.
That, that is entirely up to you. If you wanna all look at it and let me know, we just need to probably have it done before the end of this month. So if you all wanna take a look at it and decide which boards, and then go ahead and let me know, and then we'll get it on for the next meeting.
I, I would be interested in the S L V Go. The which one? S L V Go? It's that door group.
What are the boards?
So we have the Rio Grande Board of Health, the Urban Renewal Authority, which Dale enforced, sit on now, the Tree Board.
Sorry, sorry. I didn't bring my computer, thank you.
So I can tell you all that the Crane Festival, the board has actually invited me to sit on that board, and I did accept, so I did put myself on there. If one of you want to sit on there as well, or be a liaison with the city, that would be great. But I did just wanna let you know that they did ask me to sit on the board.
First year of Rio Grande Development, like you sat in the seat, don't you?
Yeah, I'm the president.
That's what I said, you sat in the seat. Do you know, if y'all want a place?
Yeah, I was on Economic Development, I kept not making meetings, and if they put one, took my name off it, so. Probably, cause I only made like one in ten, so. I had to take some of us a little more during the
Yeah, if it's alright with everybody, unless you guys wanna just dive into it.
Did you, were you thinking, were you thinking next meeting, or?
Yeah, just, we will have it.
Go through and then get it all, so it's done next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Fair enough.
So you all should have that in your packet, so just go ahead and mark it up, do whatever you want, and then send it to me, and then we'll get it on for the next meeting.
If we have any questions on what these all are, then we can
Send, send me an email, and I'll get back with you.
We, you do know that you leaving in the middle of this meeting, we will be volunteering you for something.
That's fine, not at seven AM.
She's on
It's a health board now.
That's a three thirty get call alert. Alright, citizen comments, city council welcomes your unscheduled comments, please limit comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at the same meeting. Margot? I am so happy to see you here tonight.
Hello, everybody, it is God sent to be here. I miss you all terribly. And I just wanna thank all of you and this wonderful city for the prayers that were offered, because the Lord heard you, and I am recuperating and doing well, and Because the Lord heard you and I am recuperating and doing well and God willing, I'll be back at my old self in the day city here. I hope to be sooner, but thank you and uh I've been keeping track of y'all in the paper. Thank you for the articles you've been writing. And uh just the joy. And I have so kept Gary in my prayers. So you know prayer works.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank the Lord that we can do that in this country where we're free to pray. So thank you.
Good to have you, Margot. Any other citizen comments? Don't forget to sign that paper. I forgot to have Margot do that.
Don't lock three oh eight First Avenue. I have my optimistic hat this evening. Um it won't take just a minute. We had a wonderful day yesterday. The inaugural Cinco de Mayo celebration. We'll be bringing more information about that uh in the coming days and weeks. And as I said, we want to quarterly let everybody know what's going on. Rest assured, we're already planning future events at this point. But I wanted to take a minute to thank everybody from the mayor, the city council, uh goodness, our police chief, our city works, Nika, kids connection. Everybody pitched together. It was it 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 it's beyond words to me to describe what happened yesterday. See the seat coming together. All of our people jumping in and making this whole thing happen. So from the Optimistic Citizen Action Network, Ken, who couldn't be here tonight, myself, the rest of the crew. Thank you, everybody. It just blew us away and we're looking forward to doing more, so thanks everybody.
Thank you, Adam. Anybody else? Becca?
I'm glad Margot's here though. That's all I'm gonna say.
Okay. Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero seven. It does get that's forced.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillors, I'm trying to decide if we start this out with a long time ago, the Galaxy Far Far or four finance directors and two engineering consultants ago. Let's go with that. So you have a resolution in front of you tonight that um seeks to square up I don't know, you call me a series of.
Unfortunate events.
Thank you. That's actually good. I would attribute it to, but we back in um July of twenty fourteen. This is our resolution number six twenty fourteen. Um and I had been here a little while and discovered that we had borrowed some uh we were borrowing some money from Water Race Acquisition and we were supposed to set up a reserve fund so that we could pay that money back, part of it back in the state. But you failed to do so, we uh made a water rate increase at the time. That was pretty splendid until twenty sixteen, we had a consultant work on a water rate study for us. And it appears to me that the consultant didn't exactly add the numbers all correctly. But our finance director did, and so the numbers that were put in the under the Excel billing system were actually what the numbers were supposed to be with the rate increase at the time. Rather than what the resolution actually said, that was compared by the consultant. So that resolution said, effective July twenty sixteen billing period, the and this is basically on the bottom tier, that basic service charge per month for a three quarter inch meter, one inch meter and a one inch commercial meter were all twenty six dollars. It should have read twenty eight dollars. Um and the other day, so you know, we're working on a water rate study at the moment and our consultant said, well, which one is it? Um cause there, let's say a better consultant perhaps than the previous one, I would say so. Um so we started going through this and we're like, oh. So in your packet you have twenty twenty one oh seven and you see the three red highlighted at twenty eight dollars. Those are what they were supposed to be. Well, and those are what has been billed since twenty sixteen. But the resolution was uh errant at the time, cause it didn't actually fully account for the twenty fourteen action, which is really some stubborn work, I have to admit. It's kind of embarrassing. But in the, you know, we kind of go through uh different folks working in billing. We literally, you know, we're talking with Rob and we're like, oh, I think it's this. He went down and it's like, well, um when did it get entered into the Cassell system? And it was entered into the Cassell system in twenty sixteen. And so the the folks that we have with the utility billing and the front desk, we got those are utility billing, so they reached their receipt. So no red flags for her. That's how we started talking about it and she thought, wow, I messed up? Well, no, she created the database for you that, so. Anyway, twenty twenty one oh seven is designed to rectify that clerical error. You know, it's kind of unfortunate, but it's kind of what we have. Um so I've been asked counsel to pass this. Uh and it's the rate that our customer's been paying for
Five years.
Just strange that it went kind of, well, you know, once it's in the billing system, it's not like, you know, it's a computer system, it says this, does this, it's time that, I mean. You know, never really thought to look at it till we were doing this rate study and then, you know, the good news, the really good news is that they were also looking at the wastewater rates. How the resolution, it actually was exactly matched what's in the system, so I was good, was pretty happy about that. Um but not too happy about this, but this is unfortunately what we're asking you to do.
So this is clearing up the resolution.
Right, so essentially what this does is.
It's been right the whole time as far as the funding.
This is pretty much correct, but um when the consultant drafted oh four twenty sixteen, he put the right number there. And uh well, you know, that was a couple finance directors ago, so um in any case. That is what went in the system. For some reason, the sewer rate went incorrect, went in actually, you know, correctly, which was good. I didn't wanna have to explain that one to.
I would move to approve resolution twenty twenty one dash zero seven, resolution amending resolution for twenty sixteen to reflect the actual water rates in use.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two zero two one dash zero seven, resolution amending resolution zero four dash two zero one six to reflect the actual water rates in use for the city of Mont Vista. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Councillor Foster?
Aye.
Councillor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty one dash oh seven.
Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest.
When we get our uh new study by our new engineers to have a high level competence and we will um run the numbers ourselves. Okay.
Well, we'll go to the city manager report.
Okay, well, let's see. Pride Day was awesome. It was awesome. Um Rob and his guys provided a lot of support. We had like two hundred and forty kids, everyone all over the downtown and they picked up four point three, four point five tons estimated of trash that was downtown.
Wow.
So the whole winter accumulation gone. Spring time for Cinco de Mayo, so that was like pretty awesome. And then of course, um our official spring cleanup, which um Public Works runs, starts Friday and Saturday, Saturday. Saturday morning, it's public workshop. Um we need to get some information out on Facebook, et cetera. Um we won't be climbing in people's trailers and some other things like that, um to, you know, for the safety of our employees. So, you know, trash needs to be bagged and not just a bunch of, you know, loose stuff. We have some roll offs from um
Both of our.
Oh, both. Awesome, some waste management.
And M S T.
And M S T, which is cool. So kind of that, is that the first year we had them?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's really awesome. And I know waste management worked well at the Cinco de Mayo crew as well, so. Yes, thank you, uh councillor, by the way. That's very cool. So I think everyone knows the stampede's on. It's pretty exciting. And then if you didn't know, uh Stanley's Valley Fair is on as well. So wow. And it's really, what's fun would be a season of my own, just think that all those poor souls in Denver, that they didn't get to have theirs this year, but we have one, so. Better to live here than there. Um, well, yeah, so last week, um Rob, Jenny Signs, Jeff Williamson, who's um our water attorney, uh Jordan Nimmick, who's our water engineer, and numerous representatives from state engineers' office, ditch companies, et cetera, went on a fabulous ditch tour to look at head gates, water exchange places and all this other really exciting um water stuff. I won't bore you with the details, we got to see some nice country and figure out where um this was particularly in relation to the Anderson Ditch, where the city owns some water rights. Had a particular lateral, which basically we shut down um in order to meet our credit requirements with the state. That's the simple version of it. So it was it was informative and it was that day last week when the weather was like crazy and the popcorn snow and windy cold and it was sunny in the afternoon and we did it in the morning, so. It was fun. Um I think all of you have um economic developer, R P, R F P, shall should have received that via email. Um I don't know if you would like to have a work session on May eighteenth, if you did, probably six thirty P M, because at six P M the friends of Sky High and the Sky High team are picking interior paint colors right here in this very room, so if you come early, that should be. Um, okay. You also have in your packet a letter from Alamos, Steve Alamos, Alamos County and the dump friendly um talking about how they opened the regional animal shelter in Stanley Valley. Uh I put this in here, it's an informational item. Um this is, you know, we already have an agreement with the Connor Animal Shelter and I have no idea why we would want to change that at this point other than I believe that they take cats, but I think we're, you know, we do have the cat group here in town, so I'm not sure whether we want to have any additional expense, but I thought I'd pass along the information. Um and that pretty much. Oh, you did have one other thing, I think it was that U S code thing on the on their D S. Okay, like what is that all about? Well, there's a um a citizen who's been wanting to come talk to you about the dangers of cell towers. And she hasn't quite got that all squared away. Um and she has talked to the planning commission before, but I just wanted you all to understand that forty seven U S code three thirty two, um number four there, number four, basically says you cannot consider uh the uh environmental or health ramifications of cellphone towers in their location. And this is kind of a summary here, if you actually read the the Code of Federal like regulations under the F C C regulations. If you deny the placement of a cellphone tower because you're afraid it'll hurt people's health, the applicant for that tower can immediately appeal to the F C C and you will be overridden. It's that simple. When Mr. Ferris was city attorney, we actually worked on this issue and he was like, yeah, that's pretty black and white. So it's pretty black and white. So at some point she does come talk to you about that, it's sort of fascinating, but uh nothing that you can make a ruling even near. Um if it even smells like that's your cause for not allowing a cellphone tower to be located, um you'll just, the F C C will just stop returning. Uh and the city may be subject to getting again, so I just wanted you guys to know that. Cause I love, should be my guest. So that's all I have this evening. Uh if you have any other questions or any questions, I'll listen in.
So May eighteenth work session?
If you'd like to. And then also a point of order, uh Mr. Mayor, so you did unfortunately have a resignation this evening, so you would need to decide if you want to accept that or not. You don't have to do that tonight. You could wait till the next meeting, see if anything changes. And that's probably fine.
I would say based on the fact that he said it, May thirty first, we will wait till the next meeting.
Yeah, just wanted you to keep that in mind.
Okay.
So it'll be the next meeting's fine, or you could actually wait till the June meeting, you know, just a point that you need to, you have to acknowledge it. But who knows, things could change by then. So that would be okay. Alright, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Frehil.
Work sessions at six thirty. Right, cause they're having a interior decorating.
Yeah, so it'd be six thirty on the eighteen?
Six thirty on the eighteen.
But you come early, the paint is.
No, I want to come in at six thirty and see the car in the after people thought of the paint color. End of this meeting.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh I don't have a long report. Uh I I would like to acknowledge the high school students. They did a pretty amazing job and there was a lot of junk even around my office that I didn't realize and they they just did a great job and the Cinco de Mayo, that was just a nice event and hopefully it'll get bigger. Just good to see citizens get out and to see the community come together. I think that's just what's important. Not a whole lot going. Uh we're in city court. Uh we're starting to get a little bit busier as time goes on. And so I think one of the biggest problems is trying to get people to show up at times, uh which then causes us to bump the cases and continue and it um I think Nita had a real good idea, trying to call people a couple days ahead, just kind of like you're going to the dentist, you know, you got a call saying, hey, don't forget, we got an appointment here for you. I think that is a real good idea and I think that'll help. Uh it it is difficult for the court to issue bench warrants for some minor offenses, most of which are pretty minor in city court and you just can't issue warrants like you used to do. Uh the legislature has made it very difficult to do so except in kind of extreme cases. So somebody doesn't show up, you can't just arrest them and go pick them up very easily, so. We're working on that and I think things will, things will get back into shape here. Working with uh Forrest on a, we're gonna do a quiet title action on a piece of property that we have that has a deed restriction and we're gonna, we gotta file a complaint in in district court and uh publish for a certain amount of time and uh so I just got a litigation certificate from the title company and we'll be working with on getting hopefully that resolved and then be able to put that property up to for sale and and uh do some good here. Uh and I'll be working with Forrest on that. Worked on uh Alamos, I don't know, you saw in the paper, they did a red flag hearing. And they were the first one in the valley to do that and about a week later, we were on board to do one with an individual and a lot of the police departments, sheriff's departments don't, it's it's kind of a second amendment issue. They don't want to mess with anybody's guns and weapons and uh so they won't even do one. Um and I'm a pretty staunch second amendment person, but sometimes when people have mental issues and those kind of deficiencies, probably having a weapon. probably having a weapon is not a good idea. So, anyway, we, working with the chief, we, we filed a petition in district court. And, and boy, that thing moves quickly, which surprised me a little bit. We filed it on a, say, Wednesday, and that afternoon, the judge wanted to have a hearing. And I said, Judge, the chief's in Buffalo. I've got a hearing in Swatch. She goes, well, I'd like to have one. And so, I said, well, can we do it by phone? And so, she allowed to, us to do that. And, and. And the way that process, the court will generally issue an order that says, all right, you can't have a weapon, nor can you buy a weapon. And this individual did have, I think, some Alzheimer and those kind of issues going on. And it, it was a concern whether, you know, for the safety of her as well as some potential neighbors, that we, we get that done. And I think that she felt like we needed to do it, and we, we did it. And then, after you get a temporary hearing or temporary order, then the judge sets for another hearing. And the individual was appointed an attorney, and, and so, the chief and I talked to the individual as well as her attorney, and we basically got an agreement that, you know, this person would not have a weapon or purchase a weapon. And, and all her family was really in agreement about it, so it, it went pretty well. But it's, I mean, I was real happy to work with Chief Dingfelter on this. I mean, he knows the judges. They know him. I know the judges, and, you know, we, you know, not going to say strong-armed the attorney, but we did work him over pretty good, and, and everybody respects the chief, and they've known him. And so, things went, I think, the way it should have gone in this case. Again, we're not really trying to keep people from having weapons and, you know, avoid their Second Amendment rights, but just sometimes when people have mental deficiencies, maybe they shouldn't have a weapon. But again, I, I was really good to work with the chief on that, and we got the job done. And I, I think, hopefully alleviated a future problem for people here in the community, so. Anyway, don't have much more than that, other than, you know, sometimes things just get busy, other times they're slow. And right now, we don't have any major emergencies going that I know of, and so, I think things are going, going pretty well. Unless anybody has any questions. Sit down and let the next person get going.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Anita, city clerk.
Good evening, again. So, in the clerk's office, I've been working on different ordinances, resolutions, updating the planning and zoning liquor license and business license applications. I've created a business license packet. So, if new businesses come into the area, they get a packet, which includes the business license information, sign permit information, zoning information, utility companies. It just is a list of all kinds of things that a business would want to know or need to know when moving into the area. With that being said, we have several new businesses coming into the area. We have a new flower shop. They're hoping, they were hoping to open tomorrow. Actually, they were trying to open today, but I think it's going to be tomorrow. We have a furniture store on Adams Street that is opening. We have a woodworking shop that is opening on Adams Street. Let's see, there was another business that's opening. A car repair shop that is moving into the, where the four-by-four building is on Grand Avenue. So, they're, they're kind of splitting up that building, so the four-by-four group has a portion of it. And then, on the other end, they're having a performance and repair shop that's going in. And then, eventually, a, I think it's a barber shop or a beauty salon, and then a coffee shop. So, those things are in the works to be, also be coming into the city. Just a reminder that if you have a business, whether it be front storefront or home-based, you need to apply for a business license. Home-based businesses have a few different stipulations and rules than a storefront property. So, if you're wanting to open a business, whether it be storefront or home-based business, please contact the clerk's office, and we will walk you through the process. Attached to my report, you'll also see an event schedule. This is something that I would like to start keeping track of. So, I will send it out to you at the beginning or the end of each month and ask you if there's dates that is coming up that you all are going to be a part of. The Cinco de Mayo celebration was an example. That's something that I can put in this calendar, and I can post it on the front door. I can post it on our website. And people can see that you all may show up at an event that's not related to the city council, but you all may be there at one time. So, this way, it is posted. So, there's no questions as to the sunshine law or anything like that. It's posted. So, that is something I'll send out to you all at the end of each month and ask for any dates that you need to be, to have me put on there. The state of Colorado Liquor Division has extended the outdoor dining until the end of twenty-twenty-one. The liquor division has also extended liquor to go for the next five years. So, you can get your food and your liquor and take it home. Municipal courts, as Mr. Trillo stated, it's been slowly shaking back up. I think the next couple of months, we're going to see a little bit of an increase. With the decline in tickets and with COVID and people not showing up, the judge and Mr. Trillo and myself have discussed it, and we have moved court to one day a month. We're doing it on the third Wednesday of each month from nine AM until eleven AM. There was just not enough cases to justify having court two days a month. And we did try court doing an all-day court, and we pretty much sat there by ourselves all day. I think we had, my, didn't we have like ten defendants show up that day? It was a really slow day. So, after that, the discussion was to put court as one day a month, third Wednesday, from nine AM till eleven AM. I will be, as Mr. Trillo stated, I will be contacting each defendant two days prior to the court date. We're going to try that aspect. I don't know if y'all, sometimes when you make a hair appointment, you'll get a text, a reminder of your appointment, or a doctor's appointment, you'll get a reminder or a phone call. So, we're going to try that and see if that'll help bring people in. Because we can't do bench warrants for a failure to appear on some of the cases. Some we can, some we can't. So, we're going to try that and see if we can't get people to show up to court. Planning and zoning. Ken Hamco was elected to be the planning and zoning chair. We will be meeting on the thirteenth to start working on the zoning map. There's some areas in the zoning map that we are going to look at, at rezoning. One being the property that we sit on. So, others being along the Adams and Washington three hundred block. Those are some, right now, some of those businesses, or some of those residential places are zoned commercial business, but there's a house on it. So, we're going to look at all of that in a whole and start working on the rezoning throughout the city. Other news, most of you know this. James Stewart has resigned and is no longer the deputy clerk, so I'm in the process of hiring a position. I'm going to be hiring an administrative assistant receptionist position with the opportunity to promote within. I think that might be a better fit, and they can work up and get to know everything that goes on in the clerk's office. Forrest had mentioned the cleanup days. It is on Facebook. It was posted on Facebook in the web on April twenty-seventh, so hopefully, everybody knows that tomorrow and Saturday is cleanup days and what they can and cannot bring. There is a list on Facebook of items that will not be accepted, and it also states about them, the employees not climbing on the trailers and anything else. The other thing is I wanted to invite you, young folks that are starting your political group. In July, we will start the election process. We actually have three positions, three seats that will be up. So, we'll start the election process. You're more than welcome to come and watch that process. I try to have meetings and get whoever is wanting to run involved and let them know what's going on and all the steps that it takes to run. So, I invite you to contact me and, and come and check that out and see how it works.
Lot of information.
Lot of it, for you guys.
Any questions for me? And then, I did have one other, just brief piece, piece of information for you. Either at the next meeting or the meeting after, if you guys choose to accept Counsel Johnson's resignation, you then have sixty days to decide if you're going to seat that, seat somebody in that position, appoint somebody to that position, to that seat. After the sixty days, you can either appoint somebody to that position, or you can call for an election. Being that the election, so the sixty days would put you in Ju- July, being that the election is in November, it's four months away, you wouldn't have to call for a special election. It would just go to the November election. So, just for your information.
Mother of mothers.
That's awesome.
Thank you. It's a little embarrassing. So, Kids Connection is still working on our after, with our after-school program. We are in our last three weeks or two weeks off of school. I don't know. It's all running together at this point. I think we have two weeks. I don't know. Either way. Yep. Few more. We're sitting at sixty-eight kids every day after school, and it's the same, sixty-eight kids every single day. So, that number hasn't changed. Doesn't look like it's going to change. Yesterday, we did help out with, we put a booth together, or we coordinated a booth with the Alpine Achievers. Alpine Achievers also deserve a shout-out because they actually worked the booth longer than Kids Connection. We were there to open the booth. We stayed till two-thirty with Kids Crafts. And then, one amazing Alpine Achiever, who is the homeschool coordinator for Alpine Achievers, and she does some really amazing work with. She told me over fifty booths across the San Luis Valley that are homeschooled right now. She ran the booth from two-thirty until I was able to get back there after seven o'clock, so. She was a rock star, trying to hold that down by herself. Let's see. My summer enrollment is open. We are gonna, so Kids Connection's licensed for a hundred and fifty. We're gonna cap it at ninety. We're gonna keep a cap of thirty, a maximum of thirty youth in each of our age groups. So, I have thirty for my K through second, thirty for, third through fifth, and then thirty in my middle school and older group. I have a couple interviews. I have two interviews on Monday for summer staff hires, so crossing my fingers that those will work out. We struggled with finding people to apply for the position. You have to be a special individual to deal with all that chaos, and they thought about it after getting applications in and decided, nope, I think I'm going to try something else. So, fingers crossed that works out for us. We will start our summer program June first. We'll run ten full weeks. We will end the first week, at the end of the first weekend of August, take a week off, and then we will be back for after-school on August sixteenth, when the school district goes back into session. So, we are just in full summer planning mode, trying to get that ready and get that moving. We're going to focus, I would say, at least seventy-five percent of our summer on academic support and trying to make sure that we do not have the amount of lost learning over the summer that you typically do. We learned, we lost a lot of learning this school year, just with all of the chaos. And so, we're going to try to bridge that gap and make sure that our summer school kids are getting to summer school each day for the first three weeks. And then, all of our curriculum that we are teaching this summer is going to be academic-based. So, we're going to trick our kids a little bit. They're not going to realize that they're learning, but everything is going to be based around learning something academic-wise, so. That is all I really have. I would like to address this group of boys over here, though. When you guys get to a point where you are kind of in the process of looking at reaching out to organizations and having to speak to youth about the amazing things that they can do if they just stand up and do it and do what they believe in or what they're passionate about, whether it's politics or anything else, I would like to invite you guys to come down to Kids Connection and talk to my kiddos because they need youth like you that are just getting out there and doing it, no matter what, and not having somebody hold their hand to do it. I need, my kids need to know that. We service a big population of at-risk youth that don't understand that they are stuck in a generational cycle of poverty, and the only way to get out is if you just decide to do it on your own. So, they need some encouragement from gentlemen like you to get up and do that, no matter what anybody tells them they can't do. So, I think you guys are doing a great job. Just stop by Kids Connection one day, give us a call, whatever. I would love to set up something for you guys to come in and. So, other than that, that's all I got for you. If you guys have any questions.
I just want to know what you do in your free time.
I don't even know what that means. I really don't. I get a Saturday and a Sunday. Well, and every other Friday right now until summer, and then I'll have some, I'll have a little bit of weekends. But my boys are grown, so I spend a lot of time with everyone else's kids.
Mother of mother's.
It's what I enjoy.
Awesome.
Until I just can't do it anymore, I'm going to keep doing it as much as I can.
Don't they say it takes a village to raise a child?
Yes, we have a pretty amazing village behind us at Kids Connection.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Recreation here tonight?
Well, sir, it appears not. Having called off today, I thought Kim was going to be here, but maybe she was. I didn't see her out there with all those soccer kids, but she was probably in the middle of all that, so apologies. I thought someone would be here.
Absolutely. They had stuff going on, so that's awesome. Okay, we'll go to council committee, city commission, and council reports. And we will start with council lock.
Well, I think there's a lot of things to brag about, and I hope I don't leave too many of them out. The Adams Street lighting project is complete as far as the bulbs are concerned. RAC stepped up and for free, got the cherry pickers out there, put all the bulbs in. We have found that some buildings have some sort of problems, but not many. Most of them are working. Don't know if those are old electrical problems. Honestly, some of the building owners don't even know where the switch is because they haven't used it in so long. So, we're having to look for switches to turn those lights on. And the great thing is, is the lights, once you turn the switch on, each bulb costs about a couple of bucks a year to run to run. They're dusted on, sensors come on automatically. Turn the switch on, it's great. I watched the community come together for Cinco de Mayo. Uh, I really can't, I, I, gosh, I hope I don't leave, leave anybody off. Anika, I'll just start with you and Alpine Achievers, uh, y'all set up a great booth. They had, they had children over there and they were doing little peppers and making, uh, flowers and, uh, I received a flower as a grandma from my granddaughter, so I'm very proud of that. They, they did a really good job just getting people over and the radio station kicked in. They were there doing, Bob Richards was doing interviews, um, just talking to different people. The newspaper has given great coverage. The parade entries came from all over, we had people from as far away from Pueblo and Colorado Springs come to Cinco de Mayo, just to be a part of it. So that, that was pretty impressive. As I was walking around downtown yesterday, or rolling if you, if you actually saw me, a little knee issue, that walking wasn't, wasn't option. But I had, uh, I was amazed, the alleys looked great. Now, it's nice when you can see your city streets look clean, but when you're driving by an alley and you look up, you look up that alley and it looks so good that it catches your attention. So the Pirates Pride Day, Cleanup Day was, was just incredible. I guess it was them and Public Works working together along with Sean Davis. I think there was some other people involved in that too, I can't remember their names now. But, um, they all coordinated that, so right now, our town looks really, really clean. If you see anybody drop a piece of paper, stop them. Cause we don't wanna, we don't wanna go back to it. Uh, a- as Mr. Trujillo, uh, indicated, there are some places that I didn't even realize looked bad until I saw them look good. And, and they look really good. I see a lot of positive movement, I see a lot of positive thinking going on in Montevista right now and it's very exciting. And we're getting the attention of larger cities, our events are getting attention of, of larger cities. And, uh, in fact, even, even Denver, um, has, has noticed what's going on here, to a degree. So I'm just proud of our citizens, I'm proud of residents, I'm proud of our youth. Uh, we had National Battle of Prayer tonight, I saw several of the churches come together there. We have, uh, I'm gonna save your self-plug cause I wanna brag on you a little bit, um, with the Tuesday night soup kitchen. I mean, these are all things that are, that are new and they're things that I've heard people say, no, we can't do that. Oh, we'll never do that. And we're doing it. And I'm just proud of every single Montevista citizen that is stepping up and saying, you know, we can do it. And we're not gonna talk about what we can't do anymore, we're gonna do it and we're gonna do it well. Monty Strong, I appreciate Mayor Becker coming up with that phrase because, man, it fits, it fits. That's all I've got.
I will second that.
Counselor Foster.
Um, can't really add much more to that, so I'm gonna say I don't have any. You can use second.
I can't say that I have much more other than I'm extremely proud of everybody and what they've all done in the past week. All the people that have gotten involved with, uh, Cinco de Mayo, just everything that's been going on. So with that, Monty Strong.
Monty Strong.
Meeting recess till May?
Twenty.